Follow me to order and then about the location.
Father, we love you. Thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity. Can you continue to serve in this great community? Thank you for our leaders. Those that serve with us, those that serve for us. We ask you bless this time together, Lord. Be glorified by all the decisions made every need that's in our families, in our lives, across our nation in Jesus' name.
Let's leave it at the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do have one that let's add an executive session for confidential business status, please.
Does to approve the agenda as amended?
Right there. I have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium and state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments, but no immediate action will be taken at this time. Alright, then we shall move to Proclamations, Recognitions, Presentations, and the first item is the Resource Center budget request.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me come and join you. My name is Tonya Merrill. I'm the Executive Director of the Cloud County Resource Center. And so I just wanted to come and give you a little bit of facts and figures about how things have been going at the Resource Center. I know my timing is terrible to make a request for an increase to our budget, but I think probably that is not a mystery to anyone as to why we are making this request. So in 2024, we saw eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine people in total, plus an additional two hundred and fifty people in the form of a new pantries that we launched last year. So this will be the first year since my entire directorship here, and this is actually my tenth year as Director of the Resource Center, that we will see a standing population probably of over two thousand. We anticipate based on what has already been seen in the numbers for 2025 that we will easily surpass last year's numbers. We are anticipating that that growth is going to require us to ask for a little bit of expenditures and additions to our budget. So I've got a few questions in terms of what does this actually look like by way of that one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine people? What does it look like by way of the demographics? Just because people sometimes wonder, kind of, who do we see? How often do we see them? Those kind of things. So of that number, these are not all unique visitors. As you might anticipate, we do have a few people that we've seen more than once a year. We have a large conglomeration of folks that we maybe will only see twice a year. We don't see them very often. We see them only occasionally when incidents pop up. Of the average, a lot of people say, well, I'm sure you see a lot of the same people every month. We do see a few people every month. It's about three percent of our overall population, so not a significant number by any means. And these are folks who really struggle. I mean, we anticipate, and I'm sure that you all can think of these people. If you run it through your mind, I'm sure you know exactly who I'm talking about in this case. But of our fifteen percent of regular repeat visitors, many of these folks have jobs, at least one, often have two, often have children. So of that number, more than half of them have children under the age of eighteen. Many of those have children under the age of twelve. So there are kind of a little bit of overlap there, so I divided them out so they wouldn't end up coming into two categories. Our largest standing category is still children under the age of twelve, and this year, of course, we added over a hundred children under the age of two by way of that infant care supply pantry. So some of these are very fragile populations. They're not exactly people I can say, I need you to go out and consider your budgets more carefully. I need you to go out and get additional jobs. That's not going to be an option for these folks, which is why we want to make sure that we take critical care of making sure that they're cared for, that they're fed, that they continue to get the resources needed to them. Also, in that fifty-five percent, making that largest group are also a number of our seniors over the age of fifty-five. So folks who are on a fixed income, who are not able to make a ton of adjustments to where that money will come from. So just to kind of give you an idea of what that looks like, and on average, we see approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred families per month. And about a third of those are over a family size of four or over. In a minute, that'll be more important, because for those of you who got packets, your second page has a picture, because we thought it might be interesting just to kind of give you a view of this. I recently did a presentation in-house where people got to come and see kind of what it looks like for us to pack those carts that leave our food bank and what they contain. So your packet, those of you who have packets, actually has a full list of what goes out in an average pack for a family of four. And at the very second page, it shows you what it looks like in terms of the actual space it takes, what that looks like going out to our families. So it's enough starter food to make approximately thirty meals, but not enough to stand alone. So it won't get you entirely through a month, particularly if you have a family of four or larger. It won't carry you through the entire month without a little bit of additional support. It's meant to be a help. It's meant to give some assistance in terms of, here are some of the starter supplies. Unfortunately, we're not able to fill that entire group for them. So if you are not able to get any money, you don't get any food stamps, you are going to struggle to stay fed, and we're going to keep getting that insecurity, that food insecurity of people who are only able to guarantee that they will eat one meal a day. Now, we've stood on that number pretty hard with the help of a number of community partners to kind of make sure that we kind of kept that cap pressed down on that number. Many area regions have seen that number increase pretty dramatically in the last year, have seen that decline by more than two percent. We are still holding on to our fifteen percent, although I anticipate during the summer, we will see that number start to go up just a little bit. That's not uncommon for that type of a number to be the case. As the number continues to grow of our clients, we are continuing to see new people, people that we've not ever seen in-house before utilizing our services at about a three percent rate per month, or just a little bit more depending on the months. We are now in the hottest point in terms of the season for the food bank, and that the summer months are always the busiest. And this is the time when we set our records for a number of people through the bank. So I anticipate that will be the case so far this year. It's looking like we won't have any surprises there in terms of those numbers being high. We recently did that walkthrough, just so you could kind of get an idea of what that would look like. So when we went through, we went to Walmart, we purchased all of the items that went in a basic cart for four to see what it would look like if we purchased them. And I sort of included all of that for you, so you can see what that looks like. It was kind of surprising. If we had to purchase all of those supplies, what it would look like for the budget by way of that it's over a hundred dollars per cart for each of those carts to go out as packed. So we have applied for another additional grants. This is our first year for putting in for some of the larger federal grants. We've not yet heard back on how that's going, but we have also gotten part of our grant requests back from some of our local grants. So we are trying to offset this so that we don't have to continue to bring this just back to you guys, back to the commissioners for the county, just back to the city and the county for us as a way to sort of offset this. We also, this year, piloted a number of new programs. So some folks have asked, you know, how did the after-school programming go that we started last year? That was one of the things we've been working on for a year now. We added about seventy-five new clients, or rather, visitors to our building, not necessarily clients, but folks who now know that if they need assistance, they can come to the Resource Center for a number of programs. A very popular one, you've probably seen if you have Facebook access, and have certainly seen out and about, is our Indoor Gardening Club, which grew by leaps and bounds. Unfortunately, was funded almost entirely by donations. I think we put in about two hundred dollars is all we put into Indoor Garden Club, which is going on its fifth round, and has had more than thirty students ranging from kindergarten up through sixth grade. So been very popular, been very well received. Trying to keep things moving without spending a lot of the money on anything but the big things. We are really paring down this year and focusing very exclusively on the things that we're good at, making sure that people stay fed. That's our job. And so we thought we'd come ask for you to at least consider whether we could get any more money, just looking at what inflation looks like. I hit you with some numbers, but you guys know what this looks like. You have to grocery shop for your houses. You know how this feels. And so now imagine your sticker shock, but imagine it for about two thousand people. And you have a pretty good idea of what an average day looks like for us, and we're trying to consider what our budgets will look like. And if we get to buy weird stuff, we get to buy fun stuff. I just recently got to restock our baby pantry, which cost me several hundred dollars and allowed me to buy about fifty bottles and cans of formula in different sizes. And they are now more than half gone. So we are very busy with that infant care supply pantry, because we're covering gaps that were created last year when WIC changed its policy. So if you're wondering, why now? Why is this different now than it was before? Why is this a need? Because WIC changed that policy and then ended up bumping a number of those older babies off of their categories, because they're not quite old enough for regular baby food, but not quite up to their formula yet. So trying to cover some of those gaps and make sure that they don't get left behind. If you guys have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, my board, my volunteers, and expressly my patrons, thank you guys for considering our offer, and of course, myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the senior center budget request.
Hi. I'm Richard Huber. I'm the Treasurer for the Senior Center here in Concordia. And last year, we had talked about our equipment, how we've replaced a bunch of the equipment and moved away from Manhattan. The North Central Clint Hills Area Agency on Aging in Manhattan with the Meals on Wheels program. We had a steam table that wasn't working very well, but we have two grants now, and we're expecting a delivery. May not come this week because of Fourth of July, but but very soon. It has supposedly shipped from the manufacturer, so we are getting our last piece of old equipment replaced. On our in your packet, I also have a picture. We've done some remodeling on our bathrooms to make them handicap accessible. And that our maintenance guy was able to do that work himself, so that didn't cost much at all. That was we had a quote on doing it and decided that if he wanted to do it, we can let him do it, save quite a bit of money. The next one on your packet is the wages. We eliminated one position. We have four, four people working there now that are paid workers. Our manager, our cook and assistant cook, and our maintenance guy. It's been almost exactly one year since we severed the ties with North Central Clint Hills Area Agency on Aging. In that time, we have served eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-five meals. The previous year, when we were under the agency, they had served eleven thousand fifty-three, so we've actually surpassed what they were serving. Our meal prices are five dollars for those over sixty and six dollars for those under sixty. And we do get a few people that are under sixty to come in to eat on a regular basis. Now, we one note here is we don't charge everyone. There are people that could not afford to eat, and they would not get that meal if we didn't provide it. So we do provide some free meals. We do an assessment to determine whether they are truly in need or are not to be taken advantage of. But what we would use, anything that the city gives us, is to help support our wages and the cost of food, which, as the presentation earlier said, the cost of food just keeps going up. We haven't really I don't think we've hit the peak yet. Spent in the first let's see first five months, we spent nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars just on food. That doesn't count supplies. Because our meals that we send out with the Meals on Wheels drivers, we've got phone containers and all of that to keep that food hot. So that doesn't include those supplies. And our wages, we've paid over twenty-six thousand dollars in wages. It takes a lot of effort. A cook starts at six-thirty in the morning and and he's there until about one o'clock in the afternoon. And it takes a lot of preparation to get those meals on wheels ready, and that turns out that's the bulk of what we're doing is Meals on Wheels. The in-house is a small amount. About less than a third of the meals that we serve every day are in-house. We have quite a few drivers that volunteer to help us out, so we are very grateful to them. And the Senior Center provides a place for seniors to gather and socialize, giving them a sense of belonging. Activities that we have keep them active and engaged. And Meals on Wheels not only provides a meal to a homebound or handicap person, provides an opportunity to check on them and see what their well-being is. All of this helps seniors remain in their homes and be part of the greater community. Any questions?
Looks like you guys have made some good changes last year, but getting some things updated. Thank you for your presentation.
The only question was, I didn't see it in a specific number that you're looking for in terms of your budget request?
Yeah, I figured I'll see if I can give an answer to your question. I asked her that question. She said twenty thousand. But good thing I asked her because she was here. Okay. Thanks.
Moving on to the action agenda, minutes of the June fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the June fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Chad to approve the minutes of the June fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number eleven.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number eleven. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation ordinance number eleven. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And next, we have the Airport Advisory Board appointments.
Mayor Commissioners, Shane's not here this evening, so I'll take this one. The Airport Advisory Board is recommending filling the positions that they have available. Luca Shady submitted a request, as did Randy Greenwood, Lance Link, and Wyatt Tross. There were regular board positions, three available, and then also they've extended an ex officio board membership to the fourth candidate to help bring all of them onto the advisory board. And the Airport Advisory Board recommends approval of all four of them. They've also included a listing of the current board membership as well as their, the ends of their terms, so you can see who is going to offer, who's up for renewal. And then we would add a tenth member by adding Randy as that ex officio member. Any questions?
It's nice to see so many people apply for a board that usually have that control.
I move to include Luca Shady, Lance Link, and Wyatt Tross to the Airport Advisory Board and appoint Randy Greenwood as an ex officio member. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to appoint sub-members to the Airport Advisory Board and Randy Greenwood as an ex officio member. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have the Police Department rifle purchase.
So as you can see in the memo, I tried to lay it out why it's important for police department to have long guns in their vehicles and it's a day-to-day operation of knowing that you have some type of a safety net in your vehicle to assist the officer in the public safety. As you can see, I got three options here, one from DC Firearms, and then the other two for Mont's Sporting Goods. My recommendation would be to go with DC Firearms and the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-two sixty to be paid from the Equipment Reserve Fund. You guys have any questions?
Couldn't get the Black Crane ordinance back fifteen
No.
From, from Mont's. No.
We currently just carry handguns and shotguns on rifles.
Yeah, we're not even carrying shotguns.
No, we're not. Just handguns.
Just handguns.
Nice. So because they remain in the vehicle, the vehicles are always secured?
That is correct. Each vehicle is secured with a gun locks, and the gun locks are the unlocking mechanism, the switch is hidden in the vehicle, so if a prisoner ever would break out of the back cage or whatever, they would not be able to know one of the releases for that gun. Only the officers that are driving that car.
I'm going to approve the purchase of rifles, DC firearms, the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars sixty cents to be paid from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of rifles, the amount of nine thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Managers Report.
Mayor Commissioners, we have a couple of opportunities for some speaking engagements that have been specifically requested for Commissioners to attend. The first one is the old Dash Fourth of July event that's being planned at the Plaza on July fourth at ten AM. There's an opportunity to read a commitment commemoration related to the Declaration of Independence and Commissioner Reverend Patient has been requested there. So I'll put that out there. If you guys will check your calendars, see who's going to be at town that day, and let me know if you're interested in speaking at that event. It will be helpful. And there's a whole list of activities planned for that day, and so I know the Chamber of Commerce is familiar with it, and I'm not sure if there is a social media presence, but there will be flyers sent out fairly soon, itemizing the events that are happening in the Plaza, the things that are happening. The second event is on July ninth. This one we just became aware of today. So the Department of Commerce is doing an impact tour. They want to come through our community and just see how the different grants the state is offering has impacted our communities. I believe Stacy and Amber both have been scheduling time to look at our fire truck or our new ladder truck that we received CDBG funding for. And then also, we were invited by Cunningham Cable to join them at the Plaza. One of the grants they received was for fiber enhancement, and another grant has also been allowed them to enhance their free Wi-Fi at the different public spaces where they already have it, one of those being the Plaza. So we plan to take our fire truck down there and join them for that event. We have about forty-five minutes for the Department of Commerce, just the chance to visit with them and tell them thank you. So I'd like to invite the Commissioners to go there. There's also been a request for a welcome to be done by Mayor Commissioners, so would entertain an option, whoever's open at nine AM on July ninth, to come join us for that. So again, check your calendars and let me know who may be interested.
Great.
That's nine AM at the Plaza.
Nine AM at the Plaza on July ninth. The next couple of things I have to share, kind of an update. Remember at the Community Activities Center, we did confirm a meeting with the architect that supported the blueprint to build program with Commerce. We have a meeting scheduled with them on Monday to visit in more detail about the dimensions of the spaces and exactly how we could enhance the structure to achieve everything that our community wants. We did get approval from Commerce or affirmation from Commerce that they will allow us to modify the space within the exterior walls and then bolt on additional pieces. That was very encouraging and very positive. So we are moving steps closer to answering our questions to bring that information back to you. Final thing I wanted to share is that Cloud County Community College is looking to, again, provide an improvement out of the sports complex to support their baseball team. Their fundraising efforts have been very fruitful, and they're getting close to being ready to move forward with the locker room facility. I visited with President Connession today, and she does plan to visit. She visited their foundation board recently and intends to visit with their board trustees at their meeting on Monday. So we wanted to make sure that all of our boards heard this information about the same time. We have been working with them on a ground lease option, so that their intention is to build the facility with their funds and to own the facility and ensure it, or we would provide them a ground lease near the, near Doyen Field to be able to place the locker room facility. So once they get through with more approval, finish up the fundraising, and are ready to move forward, they will still have to obtain building permit and get proper inspections, but we'll also be bringing you a ground lease for your approval, and it will also go to the board trustees for approval as well. So will that replace the existing locker room, or that will be in addition to?
First, you guys know.
It's a whole separate building. The other locker room would still be there. I mean, they don't own any of that. See those, but
Right.
But yeah, it'd still be there until the building is changed. Press box building is
No, the name. Yeah, okay. The master plan vision is to ultimately replace that press box area, and so this would be one step toward having that accomplished. We have to have space for the existing sector go before we look at replacing that. Can I say that briefly, please?
Did the economy of finding a way to hybridize those facilities, having two separate facilities?
Looked at it, talked about it, the the size of the building, that new press box, it still encompass everything that he wants for their program. Pretty, pretty big penny. And again, they're looking at it from an aspect of their facility, not a joint, so they have a little bit easier way to raise and go.
So wouldn't it be usable? By the setting?
No. Where they have no use for the locker room, for their locker room.
And that'll help them out with recruitment, retention of players, and something that they're appropriate.
There is already locker rooms, so you have them in that.
That's all I had to share through this evening, but happy to answer any questions.
Alright, moving on to staff reports.
So just a couple of things I'd like to share with you. We have been getting calls about the rabbits again. We've encouraged them that we do have traps available for the chores to trap the rabbits and they help try to remove them. And then we've advised that, you know, one thing is, is we have some neighbors that are feeding them, some are not, some are against them, so, you know, we've advised to get with their neighbors and feel how they feel about it, and one thing is if we stop feeding them, maybe they'll move on to other areas, so. But we are doing everything we can and encourage them to bring the traps or to come rent a trap from us. I shouldn't say rent. Come get a trap from us, and, you know, we would help remove the fuzzy little animals from their cages if they catch it.
How, how often do you get calls for that?
There for a while. They went, we went a month without even hearing anything, and then this last week, it's ran back up again.
I was over in that neighborhood yesterday, and when I got there, the resident that I was visiting pointed out a couple of them. That would have been early afternoon, but by four-thirty or so, I mean, I lost count. It was cooler yesterday, so I suppose they came out earlier, but they did say that it was pretty damaging to their lawns and those kinds of things. Any sightings of foxes? Tyots, that kind of thing? I would think that these things would be attracting
That's kind of what we thought as well, but we're not hearing any information of any wildlife coming into these things.
I've never, I've never seen any.
You've never seen any of that?
Nothing above, beyond what I've seen before.
I, I think we're starting to see them migrate farther to the north and to the west, and I think you know, when flowers really coming full swing, they're getting into flower beds and everything. That's why we're starting to get some more calls on them right now. You know, I'm open to suggestions on how, just, we're really trying to educate people, you know, just stop feeding them, and if you would like a trap.
People who like them want to feed them.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, I think that's their choice, and then we definitely tell them to get with their neighbors and try to work them out the best they can, so.
Yes. It kind of seems with the multiplication that at some point that we're going to have to address it a different way. Because the numbers are growing substantially.
Yes.
And they're also breeding with wild rabbits.
Yeah, you can't reach and cross and breed that.
Yeah.
Yeah, apparent as well.
I, I've just reached out to Kansas Fish and Game and everywhere that I can reach out to, and I really haven't got any great advice on how to handle this issue.
The only thing I've seen is just limiting the number of pets, pet rabbits that you can have in your
Yeah.
You know, so, and then they're your pets, which would have to be probably fenster caged, I would imagine.
Yeah, because I've seen people sitting on the front porch.
Yes, yes. And we've actually got this And we've actually got dispatched two calls if the neighbors are arguing over one's feeding them, one's not, and we had to put a mediator there to get them calmed down. So.
I was tempted to stop.
So so that's just kind of bringing back your attention. It's on it's on a rise again and complaints are slowly coming in. We're not seeing a huge but we are getting, you know, three or four complaints and and but no one's having got cages yet either. So but I think one person has. I'm referring to one person.
Do they just take them out of town and leave them?
Yeah, we have a the animals.
Yes.
We actually have a
The neighbors feeding them. Fighting neighbors.
We actually haven't worked out with Fishing Game where they're taking.
Where to take them.
Yeah. And then just one other thing real quick. We are seeing an influx of homeless people. On Seventh and Archer, we've removed those people from their tents and asked them to move on. The problem is is now they've left their tents. So I've been working on how we're going to deal with the tents that are left behind. But they're saying about anywhere they can lay their hat and we're trying to keep a good track of I know the other day we had three of them laying underneath the trees at the, I call it the Citizen National Bank Park. In between there, they were laying there in the middle of the night. We had them move on. So we're seeing an increase on that. We're asking them why they're coming to Concordia. And I'll be honest with you. They say that they feel like if they get prosecuted, the charter isn't going to stick here. So and I I'm just telling you what they're saying. So I visited with Rob, I need to visit with gentlemen, but I visited with Rob today about that, but I don't know how to help these these people out as well. We're trying to get them give them bus tickets. We've actually got a bunch of bus tickets and trying to get them to go to other towns as well that can provide for them like Solana or whatever, but talking to Solana, they're in the same boat as they we are. And I think it's just a vicious circle right now where they can find a place that we're ahead. So.
You you guys ever visit with them about the reason for the homelessness? I mean, I'm just curious, like what what's in in our area causing the influx of homelessness?
All I can tell you is basically they're saying that Concordia looks like a great place to come. They don't really say that they've lost their job or anything. They just said that they're unemployed and we don't really go into it, but some of them that we ran across are very capable of getting jobs. It's just I I don't know if they can't get the start or whatever, but so. Anyway, this is I don't think you're on. Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Mayor Commissioners report.
It was brought to my attention that at a fairly recent meeting, there was honorary commission status granted to a media personnel. And it's my recollection that that was a very specifically time limited authorization. This media member was not assured that. So I wanted to know we need to pursue any sort of things to close that loop to make sure that this temporary commissionership would would have met its conclusion. So I'm not sure if that states the issue or how we need to pursue our records to make sure that we close the loop.
Is this Toby Nosker you're talking with?
I don't know that this individual would like their identity as well as Russell Gannon. Well, but it's but it might be a good place for us to start looking, start a proper house. Pay for somebody to usurp the authoritative process.
Oh, yes.
Grant us. Make sure there be good stewards. Body. Well, that was what precipitated the conversation as if the form was met with the temporary.
Trying to help out.
Well, I know who to call this time, right?
The file of info business data.
I've moved the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets of a business subject to KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B four. With Amy Lang and Justin Farrelan attendance in the reconvene city commission chamber at six twenty five, six twenty seven, you know?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to recess in the executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor? I all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No action was taken.
This time I would authorize the city manager to move forward with the purchase of a lot for the purposes of the Mill and Cup Housing Project. Specific address.
Six twenty twelve.
For six twenty east twelve.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to authorize the city manager to enter in for the purchase of a lot for the for the purpose of development of the infill. One of the infill lots with the MIH grant. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Look, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.